All right. Six o'clock, call the meeting order. Yeah, based the agenda. Bush can approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Say hi.
Hi.
Then it's proved. Look for the consent items if anybody has any questions. The monthly thing was the card that at the bottom.
See, um, career academy.
Oh.
That's a, that's a pretty significant bill.
So is this updated Julie with? We updated numbers like the, sorry, the expenditures total like the five year is the eight point nine percent this month reflective of the adjustments? He made because of like the doubled up a lot.
So these are November's and we're in December.
Oh, so, so we're actually like a month behind. The bills piece.
Yes.
Stuff that had not been paid, so it's been fixed.
Yeah, before.
Yes, yeah, okay.
What Ashley's talking about is um. We had an alliance, we have our alliance bill and our city bachelor bill or water bill had last year's, last year's, last month's bills on it as well. And. I would have hadn't got the check for both months, even though we had already paid. And so then we caught it when we, when we were doing our checking in. So. We voided out the check and corrected it. But what you see on the prepaid bills is the correct amounts.
The career academy, we, we just, we cover that ourselves, right? Do we charge some students, charge students' parents for that, right?
It looks like our numbers not adjusted a lot from last year, but. Actually, few classes at least for the. Compared to last year's. Less. Is there?
I think a lot of it is just student interest. I mean, some of those career academy programs are so specific, like your collision, your auto body, your welding programs, it really, it kind of, I think it'll always kind of fluctuate year to year.
Yeah.
Just based on student interest.
Yeah.
And I know there was quite a few seniors last year that didn't take those programs in comparison to this year.
Yeah.
Don't go to AK right now.
Draw this thing out.
I was. I already have, I only twenty five minutes. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Favor say I. Consent items are approved. Response.
Yeah, we've got some anonymous donations for negative mail accounts. So that's obviously appreciated for those, those that are doing that.
Multiple.
Multiple.
Yep.
Uh, no public here tonight, so we will bypass public forum. We want the principal's support.
So last month I talked about um our giving tree and the men has done a really good job of coordinating with them. We were able to support ten different families with over twenty kids um this year. So they've been coming into the, to the office and. And doing that over the last couple of days. So it's. Obviously something that we're proud of, that we can help provide a little bit of extra special Christmas gifts for some of our students and families. Um, they had a music concert last Thursday. Miss B again, really, really well done job with that. Um, it's come a long way in the last couple of years and we're just really proud about what she put together. Um, Friday, we had our Hall of Fame game. Uh, this just helps support and fund that. Um, it was great to bring back a couple of my former athletes into this particular um induction, induction. So. Um, it's fun. Appreciate that. It's a big event for, for us in, in town and uh fun event. Um. Our Bachelor Boys team also helped hand out some Thanksgiving meals before Thanksgiving, uh which was nice of them to be able to help and partner Bruce at the. Up, 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 uptown and uh surprised us meals for those. And that was, that was fun. It was good for them to experience that and be involved in that. Um, so wanted to give them a little shout out for that. Um, and then the elementary, some of the things that we're continuing to do is just working through some of our forefront data, um continuing to learn that program a little bit better, sharing out some of the data in our BLT, um looking to see how the, how we use the data in different ways to help support our students. Um. So we've come a long way in the last, you know, five months with working with it, uh learning things all, learning new things all the time. Uh, but we have found it to be very impactful to figuring out exactly what are the needs of our kids, what are the standards that they're missing, and how to better support them. So. It's kind of awesome.
Uh, just highlight some things from secondary before I turn it over to Lucy over here for some FFA, uh National FFA convention updates. Um. Then had a couple uh high school science interview position openings recently, looked to bring an offer to uh. The board in January. Um, pretty excited about the couple of people we brought in. So that was, I think it was helpful to be able to um post early, um and try to get ahead of things a little bit. So that was helpful. Uh, still working on uh the electronic pass system. Um. We're not ready to the point where we're going to roll it out with students just yet. Um, we have to do a lot more on the tech side between our JMC system and their um online system. Uh, but we'll be looking to start educating our staff on some of those things and how to like navigate through that system and then um look to teach some of our students, or teach our students about that as well. So they're not so caught, caught totally off guard with that kind of rules through. Um. And we're going to give kind of an update or past update from the National FFA convention. Lucy, would you like to look at that?
You need the overhead on?
You want the overhead?
Does that might be helpful?
I can say that too, sure. What is that?
Should be like maybe East Con French room.
It's the East Conference.
It's on now.
Twenty five thirty eight.
Done it. Hi Lucy, I was one of the eight students uh that got to go to National FFA convention. I just came to tell you guys. Update guys on what we have to do. Um, so we had eight kids going. And we took a. Charter bus with two other chapters. And we left in about late October. So we left around nine the first day and we went all the way to Rancho in Illinois and back to go to Harvey's reindeer ranch. It is very famous out there. Uh, they obviously have a whole crop of reindeer that we got to feed and pet and kind of hang out with for a while. We got to also. We got to grow up there with hot dogs and smores and it was a lot of fun and as well as their ten acre. Corn maze. They do different themes depending on uh timing. And they got to do masquerade. That was a lot of fun to go through it in the jester's head. So. We've done. So we stayed in Illinois that night and then headed out the next morning to go all the way into Indianapolis. We stopped right outside and got to go to the Beepe's Orchard. It's a two hundred and fifty acre farm. And they focus on uh specialty crop and we got to hear our presentation from the owner of the farm, kind of explaining what he does out there. Uh, they, we got to go on the hay rack ride, uh through their pumpkin patch and their orchery. And uh they had a bunch of different fun activities since they had a lot of. Safe students coming in. Some people got to shoot bubbles at cannons and they had a big chunk of color. And then that night we headed into Indianapolis.
I'm going.
So that night we got to go to the Three Hills FFA Command Performance Rodeo and that was a lot of fun. They had uh three events to keep it kind of short. Uh, it was bareback broncs, broncs. Full riding with a bunch of different shows in between each event to keep us entertained. And it was a lot of fun. I think everybody enjoyed it. Uh, so the second night after we got in that convention that day, we also got to go out with the two other chapters that we traveled with and went to a family fun park. They had an arcade, uh go karts and mini golfing. Obviously, we had a lot of fun there just getting to let loose and hang out with. Racing so far, so it's probably. So. We went out to National FFA convention, uh go to the convention, I just messed around, but on Thursday we spent a full day at the convention. We went to different workshops and opening ceremonies, uh which the National F.A. Members did a presentation and also really forced speaker who explained to us like. It's okay to be different. That can actually block your damage sometimes, especially when you're trying to go out there and work hard. And that was a lot of fun. They had a career show with a bunch of fun activities where you could go dancing, you got a bunch of gift items and you got to. We had like a checklist where you take selfies at different booths or different people. So we can meet somebody from almost every state. Um, and that was the day that we went to our family fun park. And then we got up Friday morning to go to the opening ceremonies to specifically hear Temple Graham speak. She is, I don't know many know about her, but she's our renowned. Leader in the agricultural world. She's made a lot of advancements on how we work with animals and develop different things. And the cool thing about her is that she has autism. Which back when she was growing up, that was like a setback for her, but she broke down a bunch of barriers and quite clearly a bit about her journey and some of the things that. She thought could work to work for us and that what we needed to do in future. And that was a lot of fun to hear her speak. It was really encouraging, especially after getting to watch her movie and finally getting to see her person. It's really encouraging. But that's basically a rundown of our convention. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Is that Temple Graham? Is she the one that? Like worked to make it so she'd like to work through the shoots and stuff that the animals were going through to make sure that they like were stressed out going.
Yeah, so that's one of the things that she advanced is that she was fought in the head of a cow, basically, and she could see how. Going straight forward and not knowing where they're going. It's scary. And she developed the idea that they went on curves. They feel like they're going back to where they were, but instead leading them to where they.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, is it?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we want to be uh.
It is. I know I've sent some information on this in the past. Um. Both our schools fell in the commendable range. Um, I think at the elementary over a three year stamp, we've seen a gradual increase. I think three years ago were acceptable. Now we've been commendable for the last couple. And at the secondary, we stayed steady at commendable, which is, it's a great range to be in. It's the fifth year in a row we've been a commendable. It, it was a little bit different this year because of what they used in their calculations. They took some things out. Conditions for learning is gone. They added some things in, um, you know, chronic absenteeism rate and those types of things. So it was a new rating system this year and uh can't. It's not just comparing apples to apples. If you look at prior years compared to this year because of some of the things they've changed. So I guess really with those, it's more of what questions you have on the ratings themselves or any of the measures that are used.
Good that we have below average chronic absentee. It's kind of confusing.
It is, yeah. Yes.
Beyond the benchmark.
Yeah. Chronic absenteeism is uh on that. We're at twelve point three in the one building. Twelve point six eight, it's a pretty consistent.
Yeah, I understand the attendance for us even. We just know we want kids here.
Correct. Yeah. The attendance growth is really only taking into consideration those things who are labeled as chronically absentee year prior. So keep that in mind as well.
Yeah.
That's kind of a question.
So this is obviously something you'll probably get to probably look at. Things and focus on. I mean, obviously the big turn kind of math around and so kind of always been the stick with the last few years. It's good to see.
Yeah. And, and just a reminder, I think forty percent or just over forty percent on both, the weighting is in gross. On math and, and ELA, but still the heaviest weighted categories. May, maybe still a little heavy in, in my opinion. Um, doesn't. Especially once you start getting kids into the high proficiency or advanced proficiency range, growth can be a little bit harder to come by. But it's just, it's the way they rate it with the bulk of the, all of the academic data basically coming from the ISS. So when, when you look at that elementary, obviously we're, we look at the academic data, it's uh raised third, fourth, and fifth.
From your guys' perspective in your buildings, what are you looking at the closest? Or do these results change in any way what you guys were talking about?
Um, for us, we just want to make sure that they're somewhat consistent with what we see with our fast testing. So we take those screenings three times a year and it's hopefully giving us a predictor of if where we're going to be when this ISS rolls around. And for the most part, we are seeing a pretty consistent um approach. So as we look at it, I'm sharing out with you guys a couple of times a year. We want to be right around eighty percent proficient. That's what we, we, we strive to be and we're right there in math for that. Um, reading, we'll, you know, continually are closing that gap. We're not there yet. And that's showing this exact same thing on the report card. So although we're improving, like he said, the biggest impact is going to be on that growth. How are we going to continue to make sure the kids are growing each year? Um, proficiency piece is great, but really what we always strive for and what our mission statement would say is we got to keep growing kids. So our focus will always be in that area. And obviously in this particular one, the glaring one for us is science. And so we've got to figure out an answer for that, what we need to do to be able to perform better. Um, when the fifth graders take it, so.
I don't know if it's necessarily changed so much for us on our end. I will say. That we've really focused our attentions this year on like making sure like that we're having conversations sixth through twelfth grade, especially in literacy and math. What are we teaching and where are we teaching it? And then when we see in our data like, well, these are, this is an area that like needs to be hit upon, like what are we doing to address that? So. And especially with a lot of staff turnover the last couple of years, it's really just focusing on. What we're doing and, and, and making sure that we're hitting all those priority standards that we've determined. So, yeah, it's been really good. It's great for a conversation, but it. It's kind of been our focus all year. So it is good to get some feedback to see like, okay, it's starting to make some difference too.
With change in that rating system, did about the same number of schools fall into the like commendable or whatever categories as they had in the past, you know?
It's pretty comparable, um, John, as, as far as where, how many schools fell where and where they fell.
Okay.
For most of them, I don't know that the, the measures they used made a great deal of difference as far as where schools fell and how many fell there. Um. And speaking with other superintendents around the state, and there is some concern with the amount of weighting that's put on growth. Especially in those districts that have, that have high proficiency rates and high advanced proficiency rates. Um, I spoke with one who they found in the commendable range and, and two of their assessment scores. Um, ninety percent of their kids were proficient and forty percent were advanced proficient. But they, but they, you know, so they're not.
Hard to improve.
Difficult, right? And so I think those are the things that we just have to continue to voice as they. Make sure we're advocating like this maybe is quite where it should be from a rating standpoint. Um, but. There wasn't, while there was change in the rating system itself, it didn't have a drastic change on how many schools fell where or what schools fell first.
There any question about the report?
S B R C request. Um, so there are a couple of different resolutions here, um, both for on time funding, um, or requesting a modified supplemental amount for that. One is for certified enrollment from the prior year. That one's for nineteen thousand five hundred sixty five dollars. Um, the other one is open enrolled out students that were not included on, on last year's certified enrollment. That's for twenty nine thousand two hundred sixty eight. Um, so we can ask for, or we can request modified, a modified supplemental amount from the S B R C for that, um, to give us our authority back. Or I guess we move to those and you'll approve those separately with a rule called over, right, June? Any questions on that?
So those are funds that would get paid to us in this year as a result of last year's.
As well as authority.
It'll help this year's authority or last year's authority? This year's.
Questions on those? Read those.
Um, but you can ask um for a motion for a request for increased enrollment in MSA.
Yeah, yeah. So we have a motion to further request the modified, modified supplemental aid for the increased enrollment of nineteen thousand five hundred sixty five dollars. Second.
Two firsts and a second.
A roll call vote, um, John Northrup.
Yes.
Tyler Akins.
Yes.
Ashley Kachara.
Yes.
Ray Hauser.
Yes.
Corey Robbins.
Yes.
And we have a motion. To approve the open enrollment out that was not counted on last year's account for the amount of twenty nine thousand two hundred sixty eight dollars.
But moved.
Roll call vote, John Northrup.
Yes.
Tyler Akins.
Yes.
Ashley Kachara.
Yes.
Ray Hauser.
Yes.
And Corey Robbins.
Yes.
Policy this week to tackle the.
Easy wins.
Lunch meal. Take it to church.
This is just a, the, the second final reading. We've, um, we made the changes actually prior to the first reading. So it's just a requirement that for.
Just change in the dollar amounts. But then the creditors.
Yep.
We have motion to approve policy seven one point five regarding school native balances lunch.
So moved second.
Favor say I.
Alright.
Policy is approved. Word policy five with three point eight about student organizations.
Yep. So the next, and the next couple will be some mandatory policies that we didn't have on there. Um, pretty standard in nature. As far as the wording in those are very general and typically we get those from. Uh, I A S B, same with this one as well. Um, this one is regarding student organizations. We've had some requests for some student organization moving forward. Um, we need to make sure we have a standard rate policy in place. Since it's a mandatory policy, we're recommending for going in the second reading.
Okay with. We're doing second.
I'll make a motion to approve board policy five with three point eight, wait the second reading.
Sorry. Favor say I. Let's get proved. Policies regarding. Structural materials.
Yeah, library instruction materials. So there's a series of those. Um, some of them are policies or the, I'm sorry, the first one is a policy. Then there's a, a regular administrative regulation there and the rest are exhibits. Again, mandatory in nature, especially with um. Some of the legislation that's been passed over the past year, especially last year regarding instruction materials, library books and those types of things. Uh, pretty standard statewide as, as far as what the policies read. These are mandatory again, so there will be a recommendation to waive the second reading.
My question on these is, there's a lot of process outlined in here. Are we prepared to follow that process in so many segments?
We have to follow that process.
I know you have to. I want to make sure that we're.
I think we're as, probably as prepared as we're ever going to be.
Okay.
Um, to do that.
Cause by knowing that we're in the unique situation with our library, the way that it is, and there's. Materials that are owned by different entities, making sure they're a part of it and how that works. I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, then there has to be some separation with that as well. If, if that is, you know, anything that's. Public is doesn't necessarily pertain here. Um. And part of this too is we're still waiting for guidance from the department of that, you know, as far as the enforcement of some of these things that have either been passed as legislation or lifted as an injunction. Uh, so. I, I, I would say we're as prepared this, and this puts it into place, obviously, that the preparation of things of itself kind of formalizes the process. So. Uh, I would say we're as prepared as we're, we're going to be for it.
People imagine you're part of the committee.
It could be the hardest part is the formation of the committee. Question about the uh procedures within the policies and policies themselves. Seems like. Appears you had a bunch of policies to put in place. Down that road.
We did. Um, I think that's for security, wasn't it?
Well, there's a lot of, I think it was after the state.
Yeah.
I think a lot of the instructions waited on. Guidance that maybe never came. And then they had a court injunction, so paused everything.
The motion to approve these policies without the second reading.
Motion to approve the six of three. Dot six policies that submits without a secondary.
Second that. Favor say I. But you know, policies approved. This is dropout.
So this is another request to the S B R C, um, for modified supplemental amount for the I R S and dropout programs provides ninety eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars. The at risk and dropout programs provides ninety-eight thousand seven hundred seventy dollars um student interventions, F T S S, things like that. We utilize this for staff salaries, that's how we code it, um so it helps to pay for some of those programs and some of those staff positions. So we have a motion to approve the at risk and dropout prevention modified. Qualified dollars.
So moved.
Well, John Northrup.
Yes.
Tyler Akins.
Yes.
Ashley Kachara, yes. Ray Hauser.
Yes. Yes. Well, I feel the open enrollment. Those sides.
Advertising positivity was short.
Into March, yeah. Worry about Christmas. First now. Um that Rob Louz on there is high school head football coach, Kyle Teasland is assistant cross-country coach for resignations, one of the. Say both same time, yes.
Yeah, just just resignations.
We have a motion to agree the resignation of Mr. Luther and Mr. Teasley. Like a motion to approve the resignations of Rob Luther and Kyle. Teasling? Teasling?
Second.
Favorite C I. Let's say no. Resignations are approved. Uh next one, just improvement volunteer, Cole Samantha's volunteer assistant wrestling pending appropriate licensure. Is that for this year? Yeah, it's for this year, yes. I vote that we approve Cole Smith's volunteer assistant wrestling. Favorite C I.
It's our understanding that he's got it on, he's sent everything in, we're just sending it back from the B O B.
Um finalized a contract for head high school softball for Corey Beals. Then we have a motion to approve the. Softball contract for.
Second.
Favorite C I. Okay, it's approved. Just facilities grounds transportation.
I'm assuming, well, real quick on that, I'm assuming we're, that opens up to middle school then, so then we have. Are are we looking then for that position? Um as far as the building's grounds, um. I have received a couple. I've been approached a couple of times about funding this issues around the building. Um some concerns about rooms being cleaned, not being cleaned, I mean. Slept or trash taken out, some concerns of the cleanliness of the hallways in between said rooms. I just want to make sure that, you know. That's being taken care of because of the two people that approached me, but just. The lack of cleanliness puts people in a bad mood. And it's not a good look for our building too, so. I just want to make sure that, you know. We're following along, you know, followed on that, following up on all that, um so. To bring that to everyone's attention, right?
Always. Had a good building.
Yeah.
Always good comments on that, so yeah, it's. We're we're aware of some deficiencies, um both in operation and communication um that we're addressing. The same realm of these things, so.
Was raised on take care of your equipment, your equipment's gonna take care of you, right? Thank you, that's all I got.
You start? Well, let's start with the tuition reimbursement policy, I know this is. Second or third time we've talked about this, but one of the things we discussed is bringing up the December meeting to bring forward any recommendations for change. Uh the last time we met a couple of, I just listed a couple of the ideas that were brought up, but one was removing the three-year waiting period. Uh one was only covering coursework done while employed at Baxter, so I'm just reminding you of those and and. Trying to move forward and either. Keep what we have implemented or change what we have implemented, so I guess I'm looking for some discussion here on what direction we want to go with the tuition reimbursement policy. Effective next school year, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's just funny, I was just gonna say the the three years I was wanting to thought that up, but. Thanks for for helping me understand, there's a standard license which I don't, so you get the. Liminary and then you can get a standard license, and that's kind of what that three year would help protect, even though it's stated they have to be in the district for three years regardless of that. If I'm, what I'm saying is. If we just say you have to have a standard license, which essentially means we believe that. Teacher, you've been, but you were in other district, if they have a standard license. And we reimburse for the coursework they complete while they're employed here. You can still do it over the five years, but that way you're not risking committing to reimbursement of a teacher that's not. Meeting. The licensure requirements. And you're not paying for somebody's entire masters if they only did like three courses. Sure, when they can be. Those are my thoughts.
So you are you kind of um saying re- replace the language of the three-year waiting period with standard license?
Yes.
Put this possession standard license, okay? Any other thoughts?
How's that work though, say. That standard license or whatever, I mean, that's for new teacher, right? I mean. What if you've got a teacher that's been. A teacher for ten years and then wants to pursue a master's or whatever.
Then they're already on the standard license, so once their program is complete, we would start the process of reimbursement. Okay, it wouldn't, I mean, and they probably had already served three years there anyways, right, at that point? So maybe it's more of someone who's had seven years experience comes to our district. And maybe only has has completed, let's say they've completed a year's worth of the coursework somewhere else, well, number one, we're establishing. We're not gonna pay for that, right? They complete the second year while they're here, they've only been here for one year and they're already on a standard license. In that situation, they would start to see reimbursement their second year in the district, rather than wait those three years to receive a twenty percent payout. Of only the one years with those. Repay of only the one years of only the repayment for the coursework they did while at Baxter.
And I don't know what your recruiting conversations are like, so is that. Only paying for coursework you completed while you're employed here is a. Problem where you think it'll deter really qualified teachers from coming here, I don't wanna. Put something in place that doesn't make sense, but that's just language I've seen other places.
A very, a very generous tuition reimbursement policy in place. Com- comparatively speaking. Think you would recommend different. I don't, I don't know, probably not regarding the tuition reimbursement policy itself, and we've started some preliminary conversations. On whether or not we look at implementing stipends for those that teach dual credit courses. Um I think that's a conversation that needs to continue probably. We pay out. A fair amount um as a general fund, both for tuition reimbursement and for movement over on lanes. I'm not gonna get into that right now, just because that's a, that's a whole other topic as far as what the salary schedule looks like. But when I say that the the policy in conjunction with the lane movement is um. It's a significant cost to the district. Most of that's going to change moving forward due to the due to the minimum. Increasing and what lanes will look like moving forward and the possibility of looking at an alternate salary schedule. Um I have no issues with with either way you go, if you want to replace that language with a standard license and uh take the waiting period. Bervidge out, but make sure we include rolling covering coursework done while completing the Baxter. I don't have to shoot that good. That overall, the general direction we'd like to go with the revision of that policy.
I was on the board, I think, when we put it in place, and I I mean, I remember talking about the three year and it was just. Trying to. To promote longevity, so I mean, I I that's where I worry a little bit if we take that. Three year wording now.
And the only reason I was was thinking is that. You then get it paid out over five years, so you should get. Five years, but you were really locking them in the eight years, right? Where you're still getting five years. If you want fully reimbursed.
As I say, I. Generally, if they were getting their masters, I mean, that'd be, was that usually a two-year process?
Yeah, pretty typically.
So I mean, you're you have two years, they're basically then be here already. I think it's hard, though, like. Someone just comes out of college and rolls right into a masters. Want to wait three years to do their masters or wait a year and then be two years or whatever, so.
Perhaps the biggest point in what you're saying is only covering that course that's up here.
Right.
So they come into us with half their masters program done, we're not covering that for that.
And if. Say they're here for first year their master, but then they leave, they forfeit that. Reimbursement because they leave.
And they wouldn't have completed it, right?
Well, yeah.
And and you have to be here in order to get paid, right? We don't. Yeah, we've, yeah, we've actually had someone who um we wanted to. We were actually in the. Payment. Process part of it and she left anyway, so she just forfeited whatever happened paid to her.
Seems fair. And administrative policies, so adjustments on and and that's everybody's good with that.
So we're gonna remove the three-year waiting period and add. The the.
Standard license.
Standard license.
As well as. Only covering coursework.
Here.
Yeah, you good with that now?
Yeah.
Um I'll go to point two last. Uh the ag program in building, um. We're gonna have another conversation with the Education Foundation and I know they're at least. Willing to uh provide some matching funds, I think the biggest thing they wanted was. A sense of direction in what we're doing out there. In terms of are we saying as we move forward, we're gonna house an ag program, this is gonna be that ag building. And that's kind of the direction we're going, and we'll continue with. Uh industrial tech, so if our ag teacher leaves, we're replacing our ag teacher with an ag teacher. Continue offering industrial tech through through D Mac, et cetera, et cetera. So get some feedback on that. I think we have some people willing to donate some funds, but they want to know that there's a a vision for the program and a direction. That's not gonna flip from one thing to another and.
To me, I mean, I guess when I look at it, the the tech side of it. It's hard to get a teacher that can do that, so I mean, and we've got D Mac to kind of fall back on that, so then. Then we're more or less. In just a classroom situation. In my eyes anyway, and I don't think that classroom we got over there's not. Nothing great, but the shop part. Needs to be torn down, in my opinion, probably for. The shape it's in and the use it'll get. So then it's like, and then we talk, talk about security and that, and it's like, to me, I'd like to figure out a way. To move that classroom over and make this part of, part of this building, I guess. So we don't have kids going back and forth across the street, and we kind of get rid of that whole security deal.
Okay, I'm gonna just back up a little bit on you, so I I think first and foremost, are we saying this is an ag program moving forward? Yes, we're gonna continue on with ag and that's how we're gonna operate that program. Is that what we're saying?
I think there's more interest in the ag than there is.
I mean, it's maybe one or the other, right? And if you if you go with industrial tech, I don't know that that person does F F A.
Right.
So then you might be looking for that, so. I mean, I think that's the initial question I have, is this the direction we want to move forward with, is this as an ag program as it has been and go forward?
I mean, I I I'm just assuming that there's more interest in the ag than there is.
Think there's more availability in general?
Right, but I mean, interest by.
Oh, yes.
Ag is is up here compared to what industrial tech is.
I just.
Consistently that way, it may, it only makes sense to me to continue with the trend, but if the trend is ag. You go ag.
And I think about, if you look at, we are offering our techs. There's always an egg or tournament in the exploratory. And so industrial tech is pretty hard to extend, right, to a sixth grader in a safe. Way, I would think, um and I think that also just the level of expertise required for industrial tech. E Mac seems like a. One kind of option, so I'm green, but just kind of explaining why I agree, I think ag is. The way that we should focus moving forward.
So then, now to get to that, John, is. Once we've got that direction set, now the conversation is what is needed, right? Is it simply a classroom space, is it a space for for green room type activities, you know? I I can't answer that question, that that's not my field, um but maybe that's the next conversations that we need to have. And then once we understand this is what we need, now it's the where, right? Do we go on to the area we have out here, which is a part of the school? That's what we're saying, is a shop needed at all? Isn't any space for a shop needed at all? So I think I think those are the questions now that we said in this direction we're going, what what do we need for the program?
If you're going in the direction of ag, how in-depth the ag you want, I mean, you could get into. You know, you you can get into the basics, you can get into tearing apart tractors, you I mean, and if you're doing that, then you're gonna need the shop space, you know, for that diesel.
But the problem is, I think the teacher pool that we've have. They don't have the ability to teach tearing apart tractors and mechanics and and. It it's a struggle even welding and woodworking.
Sure.
Type deal, so then. To me, if you take that out of the equation, it's like, I don't need a shop.
Which I have we any of those things they've talked about, when when's the last time we've done those things here?
I mean, we do offer mechanics class, now is it nearly as in-depth as. Programs that would have existed with like an industrial tech type program twenty years ago?
No, and they're probably gonna get one of those at D Mac too, correct?
They do some like small engine do like prepare.
Small engine.
Or anything like that, yeah.
No.
Wade Bone, I think, was probably the last ag teacher we had that had a strong. In shop and.
Sure.
Mechanics and welding and I mean, there was a lot went on in the shop out there, we didn't even see it, but. He was the exception to the rule, I think, for the ag teachers understood anymore.
Yeah, most of them have more of that ag science type background than they do.
Yeah, that's pretty standard nowadays, most of them come out of college. With an ag degree and they and their, an additional endorsement is usually biology. That's very, that's pretty standard, as opposed to, you know, industrial tech type focus welding or something like that. So so then I guess as we move forward and we can work with our current ag teacher and have the conversation of what is needed for space for an area, right? And that leads into the question, where? And where does that area occur? But if we have those answers, I think at least going into that foundation meeting. We can try to develop a plan, um and then obviously we're gonna have to look at the expenses associated with each thing. And we know we can tie into the brick out here, but it's it's gonna be more expensive, you know, um. Again, we also want something that's gonna be. That's gonna positively represent the school. So if we've got a building that's not doing that from a. Visual standpoint right now, which is the aesthetic standpoint, which is probably safe to say inside and out. We need to just make sure we're looking at what is the best option for these things, so. Um I think if we have that, we we've kind of settled on this is the direction we're going now, what what does it look like? I think that's a. It's a good start and that's information that we can take to, when maybe I think in January is what we're gonna look at, so.
And I think the priority in the conversation of what space is needed is. What are we gonna use ninety percent of the time?
Right.
If a greenhouse or something like that is requested, I think that's wonderful, but that can be. Secondary to getting kids into a safe classroom that is not. A security risk.
Correct, I think, I think what I'm understanding, Clay, what you're saying is the bulk of what we're doing out there is academic.
Yeah.
It's it's, I I don't know if you want to say. Potentially level type ag stuff, it's not um ag mechanics or fabrication or welding.
They're not using the welding equipment, they're not doing.
I think there's some woodworking going on there, but it might be more of an exploratory kind of a thing.
Something like before the rap or or change to that remains, that's correct.
And some of that exploratory stuff you can, you can do in the classroom, I mean, I remember in school I had. And some of that exploratory stuff you can, you can do in the classroom. I mean, I remember in school I had, I went to, we didn't have. Ag, I wish you did, but we had woodworking like sixth grade or whatever. There was tables that had a little bench vice on them or whatever, and it kind of served a dual purpose. So I mean, it was a classroom, but you also had.
Drone operating.
Right, exactly. You can kind of give, I mean, you build a birdhouse or that kind of stuff.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments, questions on that?
I think you start with a wishlist, right? An old greenhouse would be cool. Probably not gonna happen, but you know, I mean, a greenhouse is gonna be big.
Yeah, you you put some goals in place, but focus on what is the priority right now. And the other component to this is the community vision project I'm working on, like, one of the. Concerns is it's supposed to be focused on safety and transportation and that back and forth can technically. Find a way into that project if it becomes a enough of an issue and they are gonna help you get enough. Documents together that'll make it easier to write grant. So like those are other things they could. Go into the foundation, let me tell them, we could also potentially get grant money if you're willing to put up some funding and then school lift. Whatever we can make happen. So trying to clarify with all of those to. Get us what we need.
Yeah. In a fairly time sensitive manner if you can.
Yes.
Anything else on that? Um, just a quick update on some preliminary data. Obviously, the survey goes through Friday. There are two hundred and twenty four responses and um sixty six percent are in favor of the forty instruction week, fifteen percent are neutral, nineteen percent are opposed. Um, so any thoughts anyone wants to add on that?
How do those initial numbers compare to? Well, more so other districts.
Oh, um, well, specifically in the district that we've been utilizing as comparison model, but these are higher. Uh, in favor, in favor slash neutral, that's what I'll say. I have obviously been in conversation with a neighboring district who's having the same conversations as well, and they're very similar. The results that they are seeing.
Do we think? In favor of numbers would tick up or regain some from the neutral after. A public meeting with some Q and A, because I I I'm thinking that you have some people that are sitting behind the computer like. Okay, we heard what they said, but I have this question. I'm not gonna make a decision yet. It's not neutral.
I I think the question is, do, do you feel these numbers are strong enough to move to a Q and A session? But I understand the question you're asking and I would say yes. I would also probably look at these and I don't know, it would be difficult for me to say that the numbers aren't strong enough to at least move forward to the next step. Understand the next step is I'm saying, yes, we're doing this. Right, that would be probably. Um, based on the comments and questions we've received developing an FAQ. Right? And being able to answer some of those questions and then looking forward to a Q and A session sometime in like January.
And then do you, do you do a Q and A session like that and then? Hit him, hit him up again for a second response type deal? That is, that would be the step after that?
Correct.
Because like I said, then maybe you're gaining some of that thirteen to seventeen percent to make your sixty nine go up into seventy.
And then, and then, and then you're probably at a point where it's, I make a decision.
Right.
My, and my thoughts would be for the Q and A, need to partner with some people in the community to address the comments, to at least know. What that might look like, some of the concerns.
Yeah.
Like the growing greatness and or whatever solutions are potentially out there. So that they can have a good visual of what this could look like.
Certainly having conversations with those, yes.
And my other piece is the opposed at twenty percent. What does that do from a enrollment number perspective? And what are we? Do we draw a line like as, do we need to, what's our, what's our number, you know, in terms of community support?
I was gonna thinking about it, like, I mean, obviously it's not a. A vote on a ballot or anything, but I mean, when we pass them on. Sixty percent. So you kind of, that's my kind of. Maybe it's less than sixty percent, that's probably not, probably not worth, like even right now would be going forward, but it's like, well, sixty six percent. So there's enough people out there that probably want. Yeah, I mean, that's a majority.
Right.
So, yeah, so I think you still need to move forward to the next step and. Will the nineteen percent I'll leave? Maybe, maybe not.
But then how many more could we possibly get in because of it? That's a little bit hard to determine.
You got some anecdote then from other districts have actually. Increased their opening home in after going to a four day.
Yeah, for some of that, and it's always difficult to tell through a survey, you know, someone says, yeah, if you do this, I'm leaving. It's kind of comparable to when, when districts go through a referendum process, like closing a building in town. You know, typically you're gonna get forty or fifty people that say, well, let's take my kids over here and then. Time comes and four leave. So it's hard to really understand the intent behind some of the answers of those questions. Um, I think, you know, really. While the data is fairly young, I mean, that's all that we can provide at this point, so that's all we know um for comparable data. Uh, at the end of the day, you know. I want us to be clear that we're not making any guarantees that this is going to do this or this is going to do that. Right? We're just looking at possible solutions to a problem that we have right now. Yeah, giving rationale behind why we're proposing this as a process.
Yeah, I mean, it's. Good to see the responses come back. I I'm not super surprised by weird things about. I'll be interested to see the breakout of the demographics. Next time, or whenever they decide, probably.
I can tell you just in conversation, there's probably, I'm gonna guess roughly a dozen schools having this conversation that 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 I know of. Not that means anything, but it's just, it's a conversation.
Exactly. It's an important thing to bring up though, Chris, because I think that's the one thing for people that are neutral even opposed, when you do say how many other schools are looking at it. And then all of a sudden, it seems like that light bulb goes off and the people say, well, okay, maybe we don't wanna be the last. I mean, I think a lot of people at least have that. There, there's that sense that you don't wanna be the last one.
Right, but for sure.
And and so maybe we end up being the first and only, maybe we don't, but. We sure as heck don't wanna be sitting on the sideline like Jared saying, wow, I wish.
And I'll give you, once we close this thing down, um, Friday, on Sunday, I'll give you the. Full list of comments and concerns, there's certainly some great ones on there. Um, and things that we need, if we do go forward to this, that we need to think about and we need to address.
Anything that stood out to you in the, in the, because we always read through those comments and some are well thought out, some are. What, there's lots of them, but any that stood out to you as far as other questions?
No, I think there's two things. Obviously, you understand to an extent what you're gonna get when you open up a public forum and let people be anonymous, right? So we'll start there. You know, I I think when, when, when you see the data and I give you the graphs and stuff, you're gonna find the top two concerns really are academic performance, school thing. Am I surprised by that? I mean, I think to an extent, because a lot of the comments I read are about childcare, but yeah, when I look at. The data shows me what are the true concerns, that's third. I think the points that are made and the questions that are driven are are great and will force us, if we go that direction, to. Be very intentional on how we schedule our school thing. Ensuring that we're, you know, number one, the time is spent efficiently, but number two, we're creating some opportunities for. Whether you wanna call them brain breaks or things of that nature, whatever that means. Um, so I think the one thing is, is our community is telling us like. You need to make sure you tell us how you're gonna do these things. Academic performance is a tough one, right? It's just because the research that's out there is fairly neutral. For, for districts comparable to us, the research that's out there is fairly. You can find some pretty negative research out there, but it's typically geared at urban districts who attempt this. Um, you know, so really, I I've been appreciative of the feedback, um. Certainly, a lot of it's been interesting. You know, and I think one of, one of the points made was, well, nationally, the turnover rate is twenty five to thirty percent education. My question to you is, is that where we wanna be? Is that what we're setting? Our goals to be is just to be at the, the national average, which includes places like Chicago, New York City. Um, usually Texas, where they're turning people over to a lark and right. So, um.
I think to your, right, you were talking about, you know, if there's twelve other schools that are doing it. You know, if we're not doing it, then are we really moving back? You know what I mean? Um, we have been in. So both of us have been in meetings this fall. Where I was in one specifically where every district around us was in the same meeting that I was in. So whether. They're being public about it, they're thinking about it.
Yeah, yeah, I would agree with that. I think there's a, I think there's a lot of districts lurking right now. Waiting to see what other districts do.
I think there's probably districts waiting to see if people leave and they gain.
I'd say I think my biggest driver is, we can look at other schools' data, but. How are we gonna do it here?
Yeah, yeah.
When it comes to schedules, how are, how are teachers gonna handle it? How are the kids gonna handle it here? Baxter, you know, like, wait, look at all this data, all, some of the data all around, but. Wanna know how it's gonna work for us, you know? I mean, we can guess, you know, it's hard to tell for sure, but. There's, I think, before decisions made. Lot of information from our, from our school staff on how they think this could feel.
I, I think as you move forward. I have no idea if this is an option or a possibility. Can you come up with like a preliminary schedule and try and run? In that preliminary schedule? Figure out what it looks like, helps you with the kinks before you go into a permanent here. Uh, the other thing is, can we bring in community members that feel passionate on either side? To help us with working through and preparing for a Q and A and setting up. Just to your point, we have to figure out what we think this could look like so that we give people. As much information as possible and prepare ourselves if there's going to be a shift, but. We know what's.
Any other thoughts on that? Well, as I said, we'll continue to analyze, analyze the data we have, put together an FAQ and then let the schedule suck. All right. What was this one called? Okay, whether you wanna follow um up here or on the slide I gave you, I guess it's up to you. I'm just gonna walk through. Couple of the financial uh health measures, so whereas maybe where we've been historically with those and where we're projecting out to go in the future. Um, this is just information tonight. So you're, you can often look at this information, kind of digest it, and then we'll look to make recommendations on any actions we need to take as we move forward. So really, we're gonna talk about two measures, okay? Um, unspent authorized budget is the most important one according to the state. Um, so this, when we talk about maximum authorized budget, that's the amount, the maximum amount we can legally spend. And we're talking general fund here. This is not the same as cash, okay? Um, anything we don't spend that we could have is our unspent authorized budget. Okay, so you can have carryover. And just what I said in that first point, uh, it's a remaining spending authority of the general fund at the conclusion of that fiscal year. Um, it is the single most important measure of financial health according to the state. This is what will get you in trouble. Okay, um, if you start spending beyond this and deficit spending, and if you do it a year, they're gonna tell you, get your act together, you do it two, they're gonna come in. If it falls below zero, that's exactly what I just talked about, and you're looking at sanctions. So historically, where has the unauthorized or the uh budget been? And you can see this is from fiscal year two thousand and twelve all the way to twenty three. Twenty three is, it might have been a projection on this, but I think it's felt pretty accurate to where we were, right? So our unspent authorized budget, that's where, that's the trend line that we have been on. You can see what IASB will put there in a target range. I'll talk about that a little bit. Um, but they're gonna recommend somewhere between five and fifteen percent. Questions on this historical stuff yet? Here, here, this is it in dollars. This is kind of hard to see, I know, but it's this, this one right here. Um, now. They're a little behind typically on this, so they estimated fiscal year twenty three. That's pretty close to where we fell. This is not where we fell in fiscal year twenty four, which is good news. Um, but you can see, when we talk about, when I talk about the UAB percentage of where I'd like to see us at. The state says five to fifteen. I'm gonna tell you, I'd like to see it's between fifteen and twenty. I'd like to see us on the upper end of that, and the question might be why? Is because we have a lot more volatility in enrollment. Than larger districts do. So we need to be able to, if need be, respond to some sort of major shift in enrollment. Or at least have the ability to have the time to say, we're okay, how are we gonna adjust to this? Um, when you look at that fifteen to twenty percent number as a number, you're looking at about a million dollars in your UAB. Very overhand, okay? So as you can see, um, that's had held pretty steady historically. And then we've, we've been, we're on a bit of a drop. When we make projections, we have to make assumptions. It's the only way we can project out from five to six years. I talked about the UAB percent target range. There's the state recommendation not to exceed twenty five percent. There's a balance there, right? Because we're not also not a bank. Okay, so we, we don't need to be at thirty five percent or forty percent, because then we're just banking taxpayers' dollars. When we've looked, when I show you the models that we're looking at, the projections that we're looking at, these are the following assumptions that we've used. Expenditures are at three percent annually. That's a pretty standard number, pretty standard percentage to use statewide when we, when we talk about plugging this data in. Enrollment, we wanna be, I'm always gonna be conservative in these, all right? Some people say, well, you're just giving a worst case scenario. It's not worst case scenario. Okay, it's, I would call it, it's just conservative. Um, enrollment, we're, we're saying it's stable, no increase, increase or decrease. Understand if there is an increase or decrease, that changes things, okay? State aid, we use two percent as an annual increase over the last ten years. State aid has averaged two point oh seven percent. So that's a pretty safe number to use there. Um, within the assumptions that you'll see here, one of the areas will be able to change after January will be property valuations. Uh, we don't get that information until January though, so we use no change in this projection model up here. Uh, the other major area, and this is where our open enrollment dollars come in, is under our miscellaneous income. Um, so we get open enrollment dollars in there. The other big change you're gonna see on there is what we get when someone purchases services from us. Which is what my position is. My position to G M G is a purchase service, okay? So we've used a five point five percent increase for fiscal year twenty five for that reason, and a conservative one percent increase annually after that. Speaking of purchase services, we have also factored in an increase in purchase services of forty thousand dollars annually for an SRO as we move into fiscal year twenty six. Any questions about the assumptions?
I know that historically, three percent for expenditures probably was reasonable. Does it still feel reasonable with the last couple of years? It feels like it's kind of low.
It, it probably is our average over the last five years. Now, I would caution you. To be careful over the last five years because of S R money. But if you average, if you average our, our expenses over the last two, our expenditures over the last two years, it's three percent. Because you have to remember, any, that's gonna, you have to factor any areas where you save on expenditures as well. So every area might not be an increase. We can plug in any number we want. If we wanted to see, we're gonna be a little bit closer to five, I think, this year. Is that right? Okay, so here's our projections, and I'll take you through a couple of these things. Um. The first, the top line is the unspent authorized budget. That's the number we're concerned with. Uh, fiscal year twenty four is actual. Uh, fiscal year twenty four is actual. So I think the uh old projection showed us at four forty five, we're actually at four ninety five, so we're actually fifty thousand dollars above. Where the state numbers projected us to be, which is a great thing. You can see as we project out, we see an increase in our unspent authorized budget. Um, and then our percentages down here. Those numbers where we wanna be, and when the state says five to fifteen, I'd like to see us on the upper end of that, if not a little bit north of fifteen. So you can see what that trend does. We have an increase for a couple of years, but then on the three percent expenditure rate. The bottom line is, is if we are conservative and we use three percent, then we're conservative and we use two percent for S S A and maybe one percent miscellaneous income. You can see those numbers don't, aren't gonna work over time. Our break even spending is down here, so we get in trouble right here when we spend above our current year's authority. Now, if we spend above our current year's authority, are we breaking the law? No. We're breaking the law when we spend above our unspent authorized budget, when we deficit spend. We're eating into our U A B when we exceed our current year's authority.
So does this, sorry?
This is the same, this is the same information graph mode, so if you want me to go back, let let me know.
No, I'm trying to, so our goal is teacher retention, which means your expenditures will go up because they're more tenured. Teachers, hopefully. So does that three percent factor in?
Three percent factors in labor.
It it factors in, we're gonna keep these teachers and they're gonna move up in their step and scale.
Those are two different questions, but yes. Your your latter question is a whole lot more complex as we move forward. Yes, this would assume teacher retention. How that works on a a new system is a different question, but the assumption with this would be to maintain teacher retention. So why do we do this? Why do we look out this far, at least look out for five years? Because we don't wanna get into fiscal year twenty nine and hit the old crap button. So we need to be proactive and whatever measures we take. To get to where we need to be and stabilize at where we need to be. Raise your question on.
Yeah, I think, well, maybe we're gonna slide there when you, just what you were saying there, saying an apple of this, when you said. We're not breaking the law, but I I think I was trying to understand where that trend was going, like where, where are we? Where are we tipped off? And I guess it was on the next one, the graphs, but yeah, when you're, yeah, right there. So basically, that's. So what, so mathematically, what's causing us to now go? What what are what are chart numbers that are?
Expendence there. Here's what's happening is expenditures at three percent year over year and revenue at two.
So you're basically, you're spending, expenditure for compounding.
I got it, okay.
And over time, with those numbers being the way they are, it just doesn't work right, though.
So your expenditures are increasing, but you're keeping your state aid with you.
And they're, and they're not in, and they're not increasing at the, at the same rate. And if we think three percent could be conservative, this could be even a little bit different. I mean, it's it's.
I mean, th- so this has always likely been. The the situation, right? Those are probably numbers that you could have used seven years ago, right? The three percent or the two percent.
Um, yeah, I think two percent might have been a little bit more dire at that time, because we had seen a couple of years of zero. Um, but historically, I think they're. Yes, yes, yeah.
I think I'm probably getting to the punchline, so I'm more of like what can you do? You see these projections and what have people.
Well, you can only, so you have to look at what you can control, right? So, which is what? Expenditures.
Right.
So we have to look at where we can tighten up our reins on expenditures. We don't have a lot of what we call in our world fluff, um, in our district, you know, but there are some places that we can tighten up. Um, some areas to mitigate.
And.
The overall.
And when she says that, you know, when she says what control, revenues are pretty much out of our control, because they're based on two things. They're based on the number of kids that walk in our door. We have a little bit of control over that, not a a huge amount, and they're based on what the state gives us annually. Part of this, this two, part of this to me that is a little bit concerning too is we are going to become so reliant. On T S S dollars to pay teacher salaries. Understand, T S S dollars are aligned to enrollment. Okay, so if if we experience decreasing enrollment, that means we have less T S S dollars. If we have less T S S dollars, that means we have to more, use more district dollars to pay for salaries. And I'm telling you, this is a concern statewide. I just sat in eight hours of the day, and there are people out there that think that for for some schools. This will be the end. Because it it doesn't align. If you, if you have, if you have steadily declining enrollment, and the bulk of what you're paying your teachers, maybe not the bulk, it's not the right word, but. But you're relying heavily on the T S S dollars that are tied to student enrollment or tied to S S A. At some point, you reach a breaking point.
Does T S S dollars follow open enrolled students or how's that fit in?
It does not. Um, they put them in and in place, it didn't affect us here, that if you had over forty five percent of your students over, then. You could request some M S A one-time funding, but you had, there was only five districts in the state that qualified for that. So that's another important note is that that T S S money isn't falling over.
So even kids that walk through the door, if they aren't from our district.
We won't get the. Whatever increase in S S A, that's what we might get from them, but you know, but we don't get that portion of their funding.
Yeah, to pay the teachers.
Yeah. That's what we're looking at from a graph standpoint. Uh, the other one is the solvency ratio. I won't spend a ton of time on this. Um, but it's the fund balance of the general fund at the conclusion of the fiscal year. Uh, essentially, it's your cash, okay? Um, it is an important measure, and we will discuss it um from a cash flow perspective. But it's not the measure the state's gonna determine on on your general fund financial health. This can be impacted by a cash reserve levy, okay, so we can, we can levy for cash reserves, so if we overspend, we can utilize that. Um, underfunding of state aid affects solvency, property tax delinquencies, that's cash not coming in, it's gonna affect solvency. Expenditure reductions can also affect solvency in a possible way. This is historical solvency ratio. The state recommendation on this is seven to seventeen percent. Um, again, I would want to be on the north end of that, fifteen to twenty. Stated here, uh fifteen to twenty of capital volatility.
Uh, going back to that one, Chris.
Historical or this one?
Back to that one.
Yep.
Is that too? Are we matching everyone else in the state? Like, everyone's lines look like that, or are we? Anybody our side, everybody our size look like?
I know one of the districts whose lines looked like this. Okay, last March.
So what are we learning from that? Like, what, where where did we go wrong? Like, what happened?
So I can tell you a little bit um about this. Um, we were um in an environment, this was. Um, a few superintendents ago, if you look at the years, right? Um, we um were so high in solvency that um we chose to spend it down. Okay, so it doesn't take much in a district our size to spend it down, but so. Let's say we decide to spend it down. We make that decision now. We're actually making it for the following year, right? Because every, whatever's done is done this year, right? Then COVID hits. Then the prices increase, then we have derecho, we have all kinds of different things that just exacerbated um the. So um we've made several cuts over the last two years that were pretty hard, and if you remember. Um, a couple of months ago, I came to you and said, I think we flattened the curve, and you'll see that he saw that on the previous slide there. Um, but that's not to say that we can just say, oh, great, we're done, and now we're heading all the way back up. We just have to be conscious of what we do going forward.
So, so you saw the historical now, that doesn't have fiscal year twenty four on there, so we are at ten point six percent. So we're already, we're generating it back up, and you can see over time, we can do that. A part of that is our cash reserve levy, right? So we are bringing that back up. Um, I think we did, here's a visual for that as well, okay? Again, not quite the same thing, but the one thing I would say is if we get to a point. Where we feel that, you know, we're healthy in a solvency standpoint to where we wanna spend it down, I would just caution you to look at one-time expenditures. So. Questions on this? I'm gonna come back uh to this. Any questions? Again, I'm providing information tonight. We are going to need to take some measures within the next one to three years. To ensure. Stability and that we don't realize the curve that's on here.
Does the intention to discuss this? In our working sessions, what some of the measures might look like, or is this where we need to talk about in January or?
Yeah, um, you know, I think we'll, that we'll bring the topic up again in January for sure. Um, and and see, and the direction we wanna go. I'll give you some scenarios. On, you know, um, maybe certain amounts, if we were able to eliminate a certain amount of expenditure, what does that do? To to these numbers, or what is the amount that we really need to look at over the next year to two to three? To get our numbers to where we want them to be from a stability standpoint, and to, and to continue on the trend we're on now and not hit that downward curve again.
So, so I can, we can tell you that over the next couple of months, um, we're now. Thinking into next year already. So next month, um, at the beginning of the month, Mr. Peterson will send out. Um, an email to staff, um, asking about early retirements, you know, who's going to be leaving, who's not leaving. So we can anticipate what the budget might look like, right? They, um, I believe it's. January fifteenth that they have to let us know that if they want to qualify for. Any early retirement benefits, that's not to say that um we will offer it. Um, but they would want to at least, you know, not shoot themselves in the foot, and if we do offer it, they can't do it, because they didn't apply for it, right? So then February, in very February is when they said, said state aid rate. So, and that's when insurance rates come in, and so then that sort of starts the ball rolling with. What the budget looks like for next year. So it's gonna start here, whether we want it to or.
And there's still some unknowns or ways on to, what is our T S S allocation gonna be? We don't know that yet. I will plug in property valuations when we have those. Um, and we can kind of say it for my dollar amount, really, what would it take to to get our numbers to where they need to be and when?
Like that assumptions page.
I think.
You know, we talked about controlling expenditures, that's no fun, right? What are we gonna get from the state? Who knows? I think, I think the big one for me. Right here, yeah. I mean, we've talked about it for years, how do we grow the town, right? How's that town grow? I mean, if that goes up, two kids a year, one kid a year. That probably wipes out a lot of that, a lot of it, but it helps, helps.
It helps.
Right.
Our tax payments. Exactly.
So. I just don't want people to give up on the town growth as in. That's something very important for the school. I mean, we've mentioned it before, school important cities, cities important school.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, if you want to decide on that. People do. Thing rolling.
There's so many initiatives going on right now. We may be considering. Somebody or trying to insert some of ourselves in some of those other projects to keep the voice in the school. Included or helped, if our help will improve their efforts like that.
Well, didn't they like the grand, but you're.
I'll say, that just introduced me to a lot of things on Facebook, and I don't see like all the other things that are going on, but all the efforts that are. Happening, even if we're in those conversations, can we make a difference? I don't know, but I agree with you.
Yeah, we've, you know, we've heard rumblings about. You know. Amazon and, you know, more warehouse is coming in, you know, and. I mean, they're constantly building there. They have their own cafeteria trailer, for heaven's sake, you know, I mean, and. Those people have to live somewhere, you know, and if you think about between there and here, what's the small town in between there? There is one, you know, and so um I just think we. As a city, need to.
Another part of this that's gonna be important, and I think it could be an interesting spring, is some political advocacy. Then I'm just telling you. Our revenue and expenditures that we're looking at here is no different than the state government level. So if you start really capping taxes and lowering taxes. That decreases the amount of revenue coming in. Forty percent of the state budget is on education. There's less money to go around, something's gotta give somewhere, so. Um, especially when we're spreading it out a little bit more to maybe some, right, the schools and different things like that, so. It's very much on the radar of both of I A S B and superintendents of. What is funding gonna look like moving forward and what what might they pull from us? Or where is school is gonna find the funding? So. I think political advocates advocacy on on my end and 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 any of us is going to be important looking forward to. Any other questions on this? Yeah, it's just information. You have the slideshow, it's linked on there.
Does anybody have any other questions for?
Thank you guys for your effort. It's fun, and I look forward to more things that.
Well, uh, nothing else. Second. Say no.